... Really girlfriend now. She's second floor over there. Supposed to be one of them. They extended it for a month. So. He's okay, it's the first time he's been in. It's not the first time he's been in. Not from Christmas. Mom is more conservative. Yeah. He's not around. He's had a very good decision. He needs to transfer children. They'll rent this house. Where's he going? Pax River. Harold. What's that? Yeah. Yeah, he just got orders in Pax River. Just bought a house in Virginia.
Where is that?
Pax River is Washington. About sixty miles south of DC. Yeah. Girlfriend's an attorney, so she'll be able to.
She'll fit right in.
She'll fit right in there. Yeah.
We won't have to work. You can retire with her.
She actually.
Are we getting married now?
She's an A.T. attorney.
Yeah. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where your standing is. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have nine minutes from now. Hour eighteen, on the jury. This is God's accord. This is action. Hearing none, all in favor. Peter Carey. Next, we have three warrants. From November twenty seventh and December fifth. In the motions of the three warrants. Motion, Harold. Second date. This time. Hearing none, all in favor. Peter Carey. Mary. Mary. Next item is a regional school discussion. This has been requested by a community member to be put on the agenda. Before we get into that discussion, I would like to say my personal opinion in regards to this and whether or not the council should be making a stand or statement on this. I think that number one, it's premature for us to make a statement in this regards as a council before the school board that represents the executive part of our town that's charged with overseeing the school makes a recommendation or a statement. So I think we certainly can have a discussion of this item, but I think we're more like the rest of the citizens in the community in that regard for purposes of making statements. So we have been given some information tonight. We received earlier in the email and there's a hard copy on the table today for us to review. It's my understanding there are going to be some community members that wish to speak in regards to this. I will let people speak and say their piece. I don't want this to go on for hours, so I would like to have people state their points. And you know, five minutes of talking should be enough for a person to say what they have to say. And at the same time, while someone is making their statements, I would ask the other members of the audience to refrain from interfering with that person's statement by questions or heckling or et cetera. So try to keep this organized and simple. So at this point in time, I'm willing to acknowledge anybody that wants to make a statement. Well, basically, we, at least I feel that the town council and the town should be aware of it beyond the school board simply because when you guys get a bill from the school, you send it to the taxpayers and you get the brunt of the static if the taxes go up. And I've always felt that. This new school, all everybody says is a three hundred million dollar. It's got to be maintained. You know, there's going to be a definite tax increase to the communities for just the maintenance, the new teachers, the upkeep, the heat, the electricity, you can name it, there will be. And that's one of the reasons that the way the state has set up the procedure in getting this, the last steps is telling the community, oh, this will probably cost you X on all. So we've gone through two and a half to three years of hashing different things out of the site and this and that. And then when it comes to the end, you know, there might be a drastic tax increase. And the other thing I just heard of just a few days ago, a few of these schools that got grants, there were overruns of ten to twenty percent. Ten percent of a hundred million is ten million, and who pays for that? Community. Okay? So that's something we all have to think about. And then the procedure that they initially used, it was one law firm that represented four entities. Twenty-seven, thirty-three, Madawaska, and the Unified School. Same law firm, draw a contract for everybody. Didn't advise the different ones that you should have an attorney look at this to protect yourselves. And once it was done and they started analyzing it, the town of Fort Kent, although it has, each member has, each school has three members, so we have three members on the directors. Madawaska has three, Frenchville and Senegat has three. But they set it up so that in order to pass anything, you have to get seven out of nine, unless specified differently in the contract. And in a few places in the contract, it says two-thirds would approve it. Now, Madawaska and Frenchville, I've been to several site committee meetings, I've been to the director meetings and board meetings, town and Frenchville are in bed together. There's no question about it. There is no way we could outvote them. They would control the budget, they would control the curriculum, everything. Fort Kent could go or MSAD twenty-seven could vote all three people one way, they're not going to beat them. They've established grounds and concrete that that's what's going to be, to the point where they said, if the school is not in Frenchville, we're out. And I'm sure everybody probably heard that rumor, it's not a rumor, it happened. So the reason that we feel that you people should be more informed, maybe you are more informed than I am, is that in the end, you guys are going to bear the burden of writing out tax bills for people in this community. And of course, the other communities in twenty-seven as well. So the initial agreement is skewed completely towards thirty-three, Senegat, and Frenchville. We have no say in what's going to happen. The site committee, we had members of the site committee, Sue was on the site committee. We sent gentle people to the site committee. Madawaska and Senegat and Frenchville sent people that were very arrogant, they were very condescending, they bullied the group from Fort Kent to the point where every time something was said, it didn't make any sense. They decided on a matrix to qualify one town over the other, and they manipulated that so that the view from the new school would weigh as much as the police department in Fort Kent, the hospital in Fort Kent, the ambulance in Fort Kent, just to say a few things, just the view. So it's completely skewed towards Frenchville and Madawaska. That's the site, and they're voting tomorrow on that site. So that's one step. Every step that they're going to be taking for the next two years is going to be hard to untake. Can't take it back, not easy. We're going to have some votes, they call them their straw polls, two votes before the final vote of all the people. Now, these straw polls are going to be held at the school board gymnasium, at the school gymnasium, probably be a raise of hands, you know what happens there. And they don't mean anything. In other words, it's just to give the commissioner of education a clue of what's going to be happening, how the people feel. And you know, the last vote, which will be two and a half, over two years from now, everything will be done, the design, the everything. And we'll be at a point where backing out is going to be very difficult, very, very difficult. The way this agreement first came out, the agreement I was talking about, it was voted on at the budget meeting, two thousand and eighteen, in the summer. Their agenda was put out, their budget agenda, five days later, they put out an addendum indicating that you approve the municipal schools getting together, the three organizations. And that was done five days later, and they posted it, and then they voted at the budget meeting for that. Very important, most people didn't know about it, I don't know if you guys did. In any event, seventy-three or seventy-four people came, seventy-two voted for it. Now, that's out of all MSAD twenty-seven. That doesn't seem fair. There's no publicity on what they were voting for. And then the addendum was put out five days after their regular budget, but it was all put together and it was labeled budget. It wasn't labeled budget and. So I find that very unfair, and it borderlines on fraudulent, I think, because people don't know about it. I've talked to a few town councils, they didn't know about it, and if anybody should know about it, they should. At the last budget meeting, I asked two board members, did you know if Fort Kent could get, or MSAD twenty-seven could get out? No. Did you read the contract? No. But it's been signed. That law firm had everybody sign it, they said, I have the contract, I have it right here, it's something like thirty pages. But people signed it and didn't read it, and getting out of it is not easy. It's a twenty-five year contract with an automatic ten-year renewal. And the grounds for getting out is not easy, it has to be voted on. And of course, MSAD twenty-seven only has three votes out of nine, and they don't have the majority, so they couldn't get out, it would be very difficult to get out. So right now, tomorrow morning, the board, our board, is meeting with their attorneys in executive session. They had to hire attorneys because they called this law firm and they said, oh, we can't represent you now because there's a conflict of interest in not getting a loan. So they were, I don't know who they were representing, if they were representing Madawaska, Senegat, or all three of them, or whatever. So our own school board is in bind right now. They're having difficult times, they had to hire a law firm, they had to pay for the law firm. We don't have to pay for the law firm. So the only reason I felt you guys should know about it is so that at one point in time, in the near future, maybe you could take a position and say, look, we bear the brunt of the taxes that we collect for MSAD twenty-seven. And if there are going to be three or four meals more, we have to think twice about this. And that's probably the reason I'm concerned.
Thank you, Bob.
I don't know if you guys have received that information.
Yes.
I tried to, going back and looking objectively at things, just to doing some homework and looking for the facts that are there, whether, how history predicated itself, and what's currently happening, what the future is. And if you took a few minutes to read some of this information, I did fine. And I have all the supporting information behind this to support every single one of these statements that I put in front of all of you today. So when you take since two thousand and seven, the Baltachi administration was the one that had gone out, and he was the one that basically said to everybody, which is, we're going to force you to consolidate, because we can't afford this big snowball that's coming down the hill, so we're going to consolidate everyone. And it didn't go over so well, because ten years later, you had thirty individual MSADs that had already withdrawn from their RSUs and their SADs, only ten years later, and as of today, or actually as of two thousand and sixteen, there's forty-four in total that pulled out. So in looking at how history sometimes repeats itself, is, the last school board meeting that I was at, and I asked Peter Carey, and I asked him, I said, well, how does this deal that we have now make it any different than what people have had in the past? And his answer to me just didn't quite sit well, which is, we're being given this opportunity, that we're not being forced into it, we're being given opportunity. So I went back and did some more homework based on that statement, just to see how that kind of boils down. And I would agree is that, you know, some communities can get along, and they can merge together, they can make things happen together. But to some of Bob's comments a second ago, which is, there's a few things that have gone wrong in the process. One is, we could have gone to a public referendum on voting of the creation of Value Unified here, which would then have forced everyone to become more knowledgeable about what's this thing we're building. It took us, what, two, three years maybe, to shut down a couple of schools in Walgreens and St. Francis, there's a lot of debate, had to go to public referendum, you know, people got informed about it, you know, what was the right thing that we should be doing here? This thing got created on a Saturday morning after some letter that we got from the commissioners authors came in and went to what we all know is a rarely attended forum, which is a school budget meeting. So it's seventy-two people, which is one percent of the stakeholders within this MSAD and within the place that we live, from newborn babies to almost on their way out of the nursing homes, you know, that voted to make this decision for the creation of Value Unified. We didn't understand, is the creation of Value Unified that's there, if you go back and you read the statutes, as to the abilities that they're there and the things that they can do as a governance, or how they govern all the entities that are there within it. And that's what my concern is for this group and for even the other groups that are out there, which is, what are we doing? Do we even know what we're doing? Do we know what the governing body can do? And we've already seen some things that have been done, they're a little concerning, because, not that anything's not done legally correctly, but it's kind of borderline, is that now we're, I feel as though that we're backpedaling so much to try to obtain information, we probably should have had information in the beginning to make the decisions that we need to make going forward. So here and over there. What I did provide, though, for yourselves to review, is some information that's just regarding to the taxing concern, and whether this school does or does not go through, there's a comment that Doug Seer had made in the last school board meeting about deferred maintenance costs. So I'm not sure what that number is, I'm not sure what's out there that needs to get done, but it appears that because we have what's potentially a school that has not been maintained to the level that it's supposed to be maintained, or it's run down to the point that if we decide to repair this thing and keep it going until something else was to happen, taxpayers are going to get hit with something. And the unknown cost of the new school to the unknown cost of deferred maintenance costs that are there has an effect on everybody you guys in this room. So there's a lot of, I guess, unknowns are there, and you can sit here and dig into these things all day long, but I hopefully provided enough information for you guys to just think about things and to dig a little further in on your own, to see what you can find out that would, you know, help make your own minds up, your own decisions. Is Value Unified a good thing for MSAD twenty-seven and the town of Fort Kent and all of its stakeholders? Or is it something that we need to be concerned about and potentially looking in other directions? You know, because of some of those concerns that are out there. We've heard a lot, a lot of good stuff about a brand new school, and I don't disagree. A brand new school, you know, collaboration, new programs, I'm not against any of that stuff at all, but I need to hear, as a business owner, I need to hear the good and the bad. Because if I don't hear the bad stuff that's there, I cannot plan for the future of what the right decision I should be making is doing. A couple of small examples I did not include, and I'll end here real quick, is the Sanford School that's been touted as the poster child of everything that's happened, at one hundred point two million dollars of a ten-year investment cost that was there, with a continued rate increase of six percent annually since inception, there was there, and now with an additional six percent. The Hamden School, which was built in two thousand and twelve, fifty-one point six million dollars, six point two million dollars supported by taxpayers, holds eight hundred and fifty people there. And go back and look at what they're continuing to rise, there's a cost of operation, I get that, but the continued rise of consolidation that has happened, and the same thing is projected for Caribou, which is currently under construction, at forty-five million dollars, two point five million dollars of taxpayer money over the next twenty years, but it's been stated, which is the savings that are there, that they're going to see, like the heating costs and some of these other things, are only going to be realized in the first two years. And depending on how the funding comes back, and reverses and the subsidies from the CME, which is still unknown yet to this point, as to once you consolidate, which is where is the real money, you know, does the state change the rules on you later because you did a better job, so are you penalized for having a better operations there? You know, or are we going to be awarded more because we have more? And those questions, I think, need to get answered a little bit more clearly to the taxpayers, because at the end of the day, which is, what are we willing to spend on our children's education? So if we're willing to spend it, let's do it. But if it doesn't sound, or if it's not affordable, or if it doesn't make sense, or to avoiding authorities, or how the governance of things and how the legal side of things are not set up correctly, this district could end up paying a lion's share of the weight that's there, based on two of the districts, the determinations of what they think should happen.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So right now, we know that we're going to be voting on a site, and I just want to know what the council's perspective is as far as if the school is selected to be in Frenchville, if that is approved, if there's any type of contingency plan, because the only thing that the school boards are focused on, and understandably so, I'm not knocking their goal, but it's primarily to get a school built to improve education, and not, like Steve, I'm not knocking that. But my point is that they are not looking at the full picture, what kind of economic impact it will have, cultural impact, social impact. So there's a lot of that that's not involved with that process. So in other words, my thought is that if a school's in Frenchville, my prediction is that health migration, for instance, will continue to accelerate. So my question to the council is, what part do you think you're going to have in this moving forward if the selection, the site is approved to be in Frenchville? In other words, if you as councilors don't feel that that's in the best interest of all the taxpayers in MSAD twenty-seven, what is the plan moving forward from a municipal perspective? Is there anything our town councilors can do to maybe work on some kind of analysis as to, number one, if the school's in Frenchville, how much the taxes are going to increase? How much is going to accelerate our migration? How much is going to hurt businesses? You know, all of those things. Is there a position for the council to take after a selection, after a site is actually approved and selected?
Any other people that want to make comment?
I forgot something.
Okay.
In spite of the fact that we only have one-third of the vote, we're going to be paying close to two-thirds of the bill of that school. So that's another thing to be looking at.
I think that if the over the plea for that, I mean, I think we'd be letting down the communities that have supported this town for many, many years. Alagash, St. Francis, Eagle Lake, Walgreens, New Canada, I mean, we're a hub, and we need to keep that hub. And, you know, I'll speak on that of Madawaska. If I was a Madawaska resident, I'd be fighting to keep that school there, because wherever the school is built, it's another nail in their coffin. I mean, their economy, I work in Madawaska, okay? There's a big difference between Madawaska and Fort Kent. Go downtown. Go downtown. I mean, sixty-six percent of our tax bill goes to education, and for people to say, and accuse people of Fort Kent that we don't support education is baloney. We get sixty-six percent of our tax bill goes to education, the other ten percent goes to the county. I'd leave just twenty-four percent to plow our roads, take care of our employees. I mean, where do we draw the line here? You know, we were told years ago that we were going to put a biomass system in that school, and we were going to save thousands of dollars. It's costing us a hundred thousand dollars more a year to keep that school, because there are flaws in that system. And all of a sudden, we're here in deferred maintenance. And it seems like deferred maintenance is kind of, why is the deferred maintenance issue coming up? And making a comparison of deferred maintenance versus building the new school? Why is that coming up all of a sudden? Is that, is that a tactic to scare us? To say, it's going to cost you a whole bunch of money, if that school's on sale, pull those kids out of there now? You know? But, and I'm not saying that fiscally, these, you know, teachers. and understandably so, I'm not knocking their, their goal, but it's primarily to get a school built to improve education. And not, like Steve, I'm not knocking that. But my point is that they are not looking at the full, uh, the full picture, what kind of economic impact it will have, cultural impact, social impact. Um, so there's a lot of that that's not involved with that process. So in other words, my thought is that if a school's in Frenchville, my prediction is that out migration, for instance, will continue to accelerate. So my, my question to the council is, what, um, part do you think you're gonna have in this moving forward? If the selection, uh, the site is approved to be in Frenchville? In other words, if you as councillors don't feel that that's in the best interest of all the taxpayers in S A D twenty-seven, what is the plan moving forward from a municipal perspective? Is there anything our town councillors can do to, um, maybe work on some kind of analysis as to, number one, if the school's in Frenchville, how much the taxes are gonna increase? How much is gonna accelerate out migration? How much is gonna hurt, uh, businesses? Um, you know, all of those things. Is there a position for the council to take after a selection, after a site is actually approved and selected?
Any other people that wanna make comment?
I forgot something.
Okay.
In spite of the fact that we only have one-third of the vote, we're gonna be paying close to two-thirds of the bill of that school. So that's another thing to be looking at.
I think that if the, if the over the leaf were dead, we, I mean, I think we'd be letting down the communities that have supported this town for many, many years. Algaish, St. Francis, Eagle Lake, Walgreens, New Canada, I mean, we're a hub. And we need to keep that hub. And, you know, I'll speak on that of Madawaska. If I was a Madawaskia resident, I'd be fighting to keep that school there because wherever the school is built, it's another nail in their coffin. I mean, their economy, I work in Madawaska, okay? There's a big difference between Madawaska and Fort Kent. Go downtown. Go downtown, I mean, sixty-six percent of our tax bill goes to education. And for people to say, and accuse people of Fort Kent, that we don't support education is baloney. We get sixty-six percent of our tax bill goes to education, the other ten percent goes to the county. I believe just twenty-four percent to plow our roads, take care of our, our employees, I mean, where do we draw the line here? You know, we were told years ago that we were gonna put a biomass system in that school and we were gonna save thousands of dollars. It's costing us a hundred thousand dollars more a year to keep that school because there are flaws in that system. And all of a sudden, we're here in deferred maintenance. And it seems like deferred maintenance is kind of, why is the deferred maintenance issue coming up? And making a comparison of deferred maintenance versus building the new school? Why is that coming up all of a sudden? Is that, is that a tactic to scare us? To say, it's gonna cost you a whole bunch of money here. If that school's on sale, pull those kids out of there now. You know, uh, but, and I'm not saying that fiscally these, you know, teachers are, are led by a union. I'm sure that you guys have dealt with unions before, there's very little you can do about controlling payroll. Uh, but when sixty-six percent of our, we're, we're gonna kill our town. If, if our school leaves our town, the ski hill is here, this is a community here, we have supported our children for many, many years. I left, I came back fifteen years ago because I believed in this community. Uh, you know, I, I, I don't, but I'm telling you, if that school is built in Frenchville, I don't think it's gonna affect our economy that well. Where are people gonna move? They're gonna move next to the hospital, they're gonna move next to the university, they're gonna move to a vibrant town, you know? Uh, so I, I, I think we need, I think that, you know, we need to think about the communities that have supported us. I think we need to keep them in mind and not, you know, hurt them. Uh, but you gotta keep the taxpayers in mind here.
Yeah.
I mean, we support education. I mean, I know that there are times budgets have come in and we've, we've compromised, we've always been able to compromise at a reasonable manner. Uh, and, and, and you know, you, but then our highway department, I mean, we're lucky we have Tony Cherry running our highway departments because we as board members, I sat in those chairs, and, and yeah, we cut, the department hits come in, Tom comes in with a budget, we cut, we cut, we cut. And then we're given this budget for the school and there's nothing we can do about it. We don't know where the money's going. It just doesn't seem fair.
You know, when you drive down Pleasant Street, that's quite tough to see, the grammar school, high school and college, so that's gone, you guys. You know, this is a special little town here. And you take like the high school for example, it's made out of bricks and cement, can be rebuilt. They're just gonna have to budget, they're just gonna have, I have to budget my business, they can do the same thing too. If they have to cut, so be it. I mean, keep raising taxes, you guys, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. And nobody's gonna wanna buy anything because, uh, taxes are too high. So I mean, this is, this is my solution.
I'm gonna take my hat off as chair and speak as a member of the public in regards to my opinions as to what this school is doing, this school movement is doing. Um, initially, when it was first proposed, it seemed like it was a good idea, um, as a way of being able to increase the student population in the school, to be able to maintain program and offer, uh, different choices as opposed to just doing the basics because you have enough students to be able to offer different things and have more than one person in the class. Um, it was a way of, uh, potentially helping the surrounding communities with their student enrollments falling faster, S A D two thirty-three, Madawaska. And since Fort Kent had, Fort Kent, I say Fort Kent, but since S A D twenty-seven had close to sixty percent of the student population, it seemed that when you looked at it objectively, you would end up with a decision that it made sense to have the school located where the student population is centered. Maybe not on Pleasant Street, but at least within the center of the population. So they went through all of the, the metrics of trying to look at the different choices and pick the different sites and they come up with a site in Frenchville because the site selection committee members that represented some of the other communities were less open to looking at what was best for the students in their decision-making and were somewhat bullying the whole group. Well, the bullying of the whole group that went on on the site selection committee is going to continue as long as you're married to those communities. And so, if that part is not going to change, um, you can kind of equate it to being like in Canada, how the, the rest of Canada has to bow to Quebec whenever Quebec makes a lot of noise. Right. Well, Fort Kent's gonna have to bow to Madawaska because they're gonna make a lot of noise. We're going to have a minority vote and a majority bill. That doesn't seem very fair. Uh, so, our, our, uh, our future is going to be decided by others. And when that happens, I don't think that that's in the best interest of this community. So.
Why is this the board taking position? Why do I wait?
So, it, you know, it's my personal opinion that, um, I don't support moving ahead with this. And I, I am not in favor of S A D twenty-seven going forward.
Make a motion, take a vote, yeah.
With the, uh, the Value Unified proposal of a school in Frenchville. For those reasons.
And I'll speak up to that, I feel the same way.
I was very objective about this whole deal until I went to a meeting. And I saw how badly they treated Tom Pelletier, our chief, and how poorly they treated Ed Endy. What did they did to these two guys who were of credibility to both our departments was awful. It was terrible. And I changed my mind that night, I said, you know what, this stuff is never gonna stop. You'll have a basketball team, you'll have a baseball team, you'll have six kids from Fort Kent, three from Madawaska, and the people from Madawaska gonna be freaking out. You know, I, I, when I saw it, and it's like, this is crazy.
But I guess to that point, I guess, and the things that we're bringing to you guys as well is that you're the group that takes the brunt of that. Because no one shows up to a school board meeting to be able to vent their frustration and concern to those meetings. There's been a lot more attendance in the past six months than there's ever been probably since, you know, people have been hosting public school board meetings back then. But it's, the taxpayers will come and look at this brick building here as to where the problem lies, if there's a problem to be had out there, so. So I appreciate you guys for speaking your, your comments and your two cents, but there's a lot of more that's built into this matrix. And we do, I've done a lot of homework for the past three or four weeks now, just looking in this and trying to find out what facts are because there's talk of this and that and everything, from every angle, every corner, and every side that comes on, the different teams are out there. But when you look into the facts of it, there's not a lot, not a lot of logical common sense in this based on what we currently own as a town. We currently have the two schools, we have the university, we have the hospital, we have a lot of stuff going for us.
We've already got eight or nine towns and just desecrate them.
I agree with you right there, which is it would take away from the value of participating to an MSAD. Because right now there is a value for another town to participate into it. Eagle Lake chose to pull out for their own reasons, I don't think they're saving any money. As a matter of fact, I know they're not saving any money, so. They paid some extra money to where they stand today, but that's gonna disappear in the next year and a half, so they'll probably be looking to come back in. So the value of the MSAD twenty-seven to me will only start going down if participating to the other entity that's there is now causing MSAD twenty-seven.
Right.
Yes, um, so, I just wanted to say as somebody who's been living here for twelve years, but moved in from an outside area and I've seen many of my fellow physicians come and go and having problems retaining physicians and retaining, um, professors at U M F K, um, which, as you guys mentioned, are some of the benefits that this town has and something that makes Fort Kent very special, unique and wonderful is that they will cite, people with children will often move away because we don't have the same amount of services and same, um, perceived notion of availability and different opportunities for the children at the local school. And while I feel that the local school does a fabulous job, um, a lot of people are looking for something that is more expansive. And whatever stance the council decides to take or not take about what happens in the future, keeping in mind that if we choose not to participate, but the population, which is nationwide, birth rates are going down. It's not as if they're all people moving elsewhere, birth rates are going down across the state. So it's not a population that's going to grow and expand by itself. It's not something that's gonna bring in more state funding. They're gonna have the same building with the same repair cost and a dwindling student population and cut more and more services. And then you're gonna find it's hard to get people from away to move here and fill some of the jobs that are needed to keep the rest of the community going. So whatever happens with this process, keeping in mind that something will need to be done about this in the future. And if we say no to this but don't have a plan B, what are we doing to ourselves?
That's the point, that we don't have a plan B.
There's no plan B. And so when people are wondering, well, should we take this or not? It's, it's like, well, right now it seems like either combine schools, which sounds wonderful, and there's a lot of good points, and like that was said, there's a lot of good points to that. And it's either do that in Frenchville because of the way the crazy state system is and picking this process, or not do that and get stuck with the dwindling population, dwindling school services. I mean, yes, sixty-six percent of the budget goes to school and it feels bad. But if we don't have young people in the community, when I'm old and wanna like go to Crosswinds to be taken care of, there isn't gonna be anyone to take care of me. So, you know, you, you have to, to, to put the effort into the youth to be able to sustain the town over time.
All right, so two things, one, we had reached out to M M A to find out about taking a stance on this issue, right? And they had had a recommendation.
Regent M M A? No.
No, okay. All right, so I guess my, my, I, I'm not in disagreement with almost anything that's been said here tonight. And I just, my example that I bring in is the tax center. And when we were in high school, the tax center was the newest greatest thing. And it had all kinds of services, it offered welding, it offered electrical and carpentry. And now we still have that building, but the services offered are less. And so we don't have a plan B, but people are talking and there's, a plan B's not that far away because we can still collaborate by sharing services with buildings that are already existing. If you have specialty education in one area in Madawaska, then you can travel the students that wanna take that specific education to Madawaska and then have a different curriculum in Fort Kent, and then we have the tax center in Frenchville. So we have three buildings and, and even more, we do, uh, setting that in Frenchville. Their buildings into account. So we don't necessarily need a new building, uh, to have more programming, we just need to be able to work together more.
We can still have state of the education in mind with what we have already, correct?
Right, right. And without, without being held financially responsible, I mean, but that's, that's, we're being financially hostage. And that's, that's never good.
I think, I think it's a concern though, is, is this dividing our town. It's an issue dividing our town. I mean, social media is crazy. Everybody get off Facebook, I mean, and if we could all get under one roof and, you know, deck it out and duke it out, it would be great, but, you know, that's a concern that I have. It's like, we've got some people that are just dead set for it. Some people are on the fence, and it's, it's creating a division, a big division.
And a lot of.
So I mean, I, I mean, I don't have an answer for that, but it's out there and, uh, it, it's not good.
I feel like we should not wait till the end, we should nip this in the bud now and decide what we're gonna do now. Now and not wait till it's all said and done and it's too late.
But, but I don't think our say is anything more than yours as a voter. I mean, we really don't have a state that, or even, I mean, we've all said, well, not, we've all, uh, most of us have made a statement that said what we believe, but I don't believe it's our place to.
Then that was your town council took a position on where the state selection committee did their thing.
Firing the town manager and their.
If the town could withdraw from the district.
Correct.
And that could be initiated by the council.
Could be threatened or something?
The reality of the town withdrawing from S A D twenty-seven is it's almost, it's almost dead in the water because without S A, without Fort Kent and S A D twenty-seven, the commissioner's gonna look in that, at that and say the rest of the towns can't, can't support it.
Yeah, but if we voted out, I mean, it's not gonna go through, in other words.
Has to be approved by the commissioner.
Still has to be approved by the commissioner. And, you know, and the commissioner has, you know, I mean, the town of Fort Kent could initiate a process that says, we wanna get out of S A D twenty-seven. We make a, we make a vote and go through the process and say, we wanna get out of S A D twenty-seven. We send it into, to the state for approval by the commissioner. They're gonna look at that and they're gonna say, yeah, if you can't do that, Fort Kent pays, Fort Kent pays sixty percent of S A D twenty-seven cost, I mean, what are they gonna do? You know, it's gonna fall, it's, it's gonna destabilize the whole thing, so they could.
So if the council knows or the council is not in agreement with the school being built in Frenchville, I guess my question to the council is, do you have a plan, a contingency plan to maybe assist the town? In other words, if the council says, okay, this is gonna be a train wreck, let's just say. If it's in Frenchville and you as councillors know it's gonna be a train wreck for the town, what is the plan to protect the town from a train wreck? I guess from a municipal perspective? Is there something the council could do to kind of either mitigate some of those damages or stop the train wreck totaling, I guess is, is my.
I think that would be up to the school board.
It is, I mean, as I said at the beginning, the school board members that represent the town of Fort Kent are the ones that are, that, that are given that, they're charged of.
They have no authority.
Of, they have.
The school board has no authority. Not anymore.
They're the ones that, they're the ones that created this thing.
They're not.
And it's very difficult to uncreate. Although Madawaska stated on several occasions that they could get out of it if they, if it was coming to Fort Kent. So if they did a little bit of research, uh, some legal research, maybe, maybe that's possible for us as well, so I don't know.
You'll find out tomorrow morning, Bob, or?
No, we won't find out anything tomorrow morning, I don't think so. Because tomorrow morning, our school board is meeting with their law firm, the executive session. Uh, but it's, uh, it's just to hash out whatever problems they have, so we don't know what, what they're looking at either.
Right. I mean, there's differences between the structure of Fort Kent and S A D twenty-seven and Madawaska School because Madawaska is a part of an S A D. So Madawaska School is, is basically Madawaska, so it's.
It's easier there.
There's, it's different, yeah. You know, they're not part of a group. I mean, this whole idea of building a new school and coming up with money and saying that, you know, we're gonna give you some money to build a new school would have been ideal if it had been given to S A D twenty-seven that had, you know, had one time six communities together, working together. Because they're already working together, they're all already culturally together. I mean, as was said earlier, you know, Fort Kent is the hub for these communities. Their services are, are coming to Fort Kent. Uh, it, that, that makes sense. I mean, it's not, it, it, it's not gonna be very easy to marry Fort Kent with Madawaska and, and work together.
So why do you have to, Steve?
I mean, just to give you one other little short story, because it's, this one is, is from my family. My son came to this school and Chris did a great job and everything. He was in that rural U program that was there and spent his junior and his senior year and then he went off to the air force, he's in the military, took more courses and classes over there and kind of did his thing and stuff. He plans on coming back to go back to that university again to finish up his bachelor's degree and then be able to continue to keep living here in this town. I don't think that if Chris would have seen, Chris has gone to a lot of different places and, and experienced a lot of things, whatever, but he really appreciates home. And when he comes back here, he appreciates this town and everything else. I think this town does have a lot, awful lot to offer. I think that, and just because you get a new car doesn't make you a better driver, type deal, so. You know, I think that to Jake's point is that there's an awful lot of opportunity that is there. You know, I go in from my small business and I go into Kathy Bullshard's classroom and I talk to her students and I think there's more of that kind of collaboration that can happen to be able to give students. And I think there's more of that kind of collaboration that can happen to be able to give students a different educational experience that's there. But we need to figure out that Plan B too. So for all in agreement at some level that we don't think that this thing's gonna work for us, well, we already know what's currently happening is kind of just holding treading water for it now. We're going forward to have kids like my son come back to this town and wanna get into cybersecurity and have a business here online and do a bunch of stuff, whatever. That, that's really what we need to be able to just maintain status quo of the younger people that are gonna be staying in this town. So.
What was very interesting too, a month ago, the astronaut in outer space called Caribou High School and talked to all the students. And she said, it's not the fancy and big school that's gonna get you anywhere. It's the instruction and the motivation you had. She did it.
As far as Paul's comment about dividing people in the community, I mean, this new school business, everybody that works at the school wants a new car. So, I mean, everybody's gonna be in favor of having a brand new school. I mean, who wouldn't want to work in a brand new school? Or a brand new hospital? Or, or have a brand new car? I mean, it's human nature. Everybody wants a new versus the old. And, you know, but is it always better? And the bricks and mortar doesn't necessarily make the education.
See, to be fair though, the new school would involve, if I understand correctly, probably cutting twenty-five teacher positions. So they want this for the benefit of their students. And some of them are gonna end up jobless as a result. So it's not just the shiny new car. They really do think this is better for kids. And when you look at diminishing population over time and the need to cut services, it's not just the kids who have bright futures ahead of them, but you're gonna end up having to cut special education services, physical therapy services, occupational therapy services. I see kids in my practice from all over the same town ballot. So I care about the kids here, of course, because I live here too. And my kids are here, but also I care about the kids in Frenchville. And some of Madawaska kids come see me. And you know, a lot of them really need those extra services to make their education work. And so the instruction can be top notch. But if you have those kids fall behind because they have a medical condition that causes them to not be able to learn well or physically interact with other people well or have behavior issues and you take away those services because you have to keep cutting because you don't consolidate, then, or, you know, somehow attract other people or have some kind of Plan B, you're gonna end up with a lot of people that are unable to complete a good education, even if the instruction is top notch.
It all boils down to money.
It does.
Plan B is gonna cost money.
Yeah, a lot.
John?
Yes.
The other guys in the council, or what you guys, what's your opinion?
I said my own.
Yeah, I know.
I, I take the same, the same stance as what John asked. I was in favor of the school when it first started. But with everything happening, it just turned me right off. But my biggest question is that the Plan B, if we, if we don't go unified, what is it gonna cost us to upgrade our school? And nobody's come out with any type of figures. And I think they should look into that so they, they could share it with the voters. And so they can make an honest decision on, can we afford this? Or do we go the other route?
Can we afford not to do it? That, that information has been gathered. We're taking a look at it. The building is seventy years old, so. So it's deferred maintenance. It's deferred maintenance. It's the fact that the building wasn't designed for more than seventy years, so.
But it can be rebuilt. It's made out of cement and bricks. There's nothing wrong with building homes that are two hundred years old. They're rebuilding, yes. That means you want to budget. That's the biggest problem with the schools. They can't budget.
Come to the budget hearings.
Hey, believe me, I'm, I'm, they know how I am over here. When it comes down to taxes, the next five, ten years, let me tell you something, guys. It's gonna be brutal in this town. There's people that are getting up their age and are trying to stay in their homes and they can't even do it no more. Or no doctors. Let me tell you something. And your employee don't pay taxes. And you guys, you the town councils should turn around and start paying, charging some of the hospitals taxes and stuff like that to help us out. I call them freeloaders. You know that?
The, the.
Free cultural.
The town of Fort Kent, if it's gonna be.
You all said, Mr. Melter, you all said what you were saying?
Well, I was saying that the, the the high school is newer than hospital. And we still have a very fine hospital. And I think the high school still looks very good also.
And we can invite Madawaska to listen in case to Fort Kent if they want. Just put more in the same building.
Keith, no, never that.
No, I know, I know.
You know what I mean? Ed, John, okay, go ahead.
Well, I wanted to say something. I kind of lost this. I wanted.
The town of Fort Kent or SAD twenty-seven is facing the possibility of sixty percent the cost of this new unified system. And we're gonna face a serious outmigration. And still we're gonna be paying the bill. The building does not educate anybody.
Right.
It's the teachers and the motivation that the teachers can provide to the students. I don't see any benefit to Fort Kent or SAD twenty-seven because the people from the uplying communities are gonna have to dial it later for anything that occurs in Frenchville. We have the population. We're gonna have the cost. If we can't have the school in Fort Kent, I say the town has to do its utmost to get out of this unified system. Whatever it costs.
I was just reminded this week too of some older buildings in town. And Nero, I reminded you because you're sitting here, but we have the courthouse and the fire station that were old and dilapidated and now have been repaired and serve the community quite well. So I don't know. I've been in the high school downstairs, upstairs and quite a few of the cracks and maybe some others haven't. And I, I keep hearing it's in bad shape, but I just, I guess I just don't know where. I remember the roof's not that old. Uh, there is water that comes in from a pipe in the basement during flood season, but pipe can be pulled out of the field. So.
We always took care of it.
I went to, I went to the old wooden high school they had here before they had the bricks and mortar. And they pumped out doctors and lawyers and you name it, Indian chiefs and everything. So it's not the school.
I have a question. Does anyone happen to know when SAD twenty-seven was formed and the other schools joined us, was there any outmigration from those towns to Fort Kent, the way that you guys are concerned about outgoing migration from Fort Kent to Frenchville?
Certainly.
Like, do you have numbers though? Does anyone have numbers for that?
I didn't research it, but I can figure it.
Yeah, I can understand some of that.
So because the school's like, it hasn't really been all that long.
Right.
It wasn't done a long time. And Eagle Lake has a lake, so people are drawn to.
Well, we still have a college and a hospital, so like those aren't going away.
No.
They gotta pay taxes. That's what they gotta do.
Just coming back to the point of dividing the community. We've seen enough contention amongst people on social media from professional people in prestigious places that make comments that, that affect the community itself. There's a number of business people in this room right now who have contributed very dearly over the years to booster clubs, uh, to the children's activities and have opened up their wallet and dug quite deeply. To have people on the board of the tri-community board or whatever you wanna call it, come out and want to boycott the big money businesses that are supporting exactly what's being talked about tonight. I have a big problem with that. Fort Kent is the hub. And I know that from being the police chief here, we don't always just deal with Fort Kent issues. I have people from St. John's, St. Francis, Alleghast, Eagle Lake and New Canada, Malagras, to name them all, I guess, uh, that are calling here all the time for issues they have in their community. Yeah, they don't pay my wages. The town of Fort Kent does. But because these people are what I consider the hub, the place that they do their business, the place where they conduct their business, buy, buy stuff at the local stores and send their kids to the school, the heartbeat of this town is on Pleasant Street. People from these surrounding communities come there. And to have people criticize and come out and publicly take a stand, people in administrative positions that should recuse themselves from any of those discussions that are happening, voice these things about our local businesses is absurd to me. So how are we gonna be able to move forward? Yeah, I'm not a Fort Kent resident, but I am a Fort Kent person. This is my community. This is where I work. This is the people who I represent. And I represent all of those other communities that are there too. But to hear these things divide our community because of where the school is going to go is absurd. And it's not, as you said, Doc, it's not gonna get any better. It's not gonna get any better. The contention is only getting worse. So that would just, a point I wanna make, from my observations, having, having worked in all of those communities at one time in my career, uh, coming, I mean, I went to Sinclair School. My dad worked in all of these communities as well as I have. Culturally, there is a difference. The people in Frenchville, San Agatha, Sinclair and the Long Lake region associate themselves with Madawaska. Hence where they're at today. All of these other surrounding communities, people do their shopping and do their everything else in Fort Kent. And there is a difference. And I don't think there's a difference that we can repair.
We're already nine communities that make up twenty-sevens.
Let's take a strong poll to see what you guys.
I think I'll take one meeting, Larry. Give them a break.
We need to hear from the two others. I wanna hear from the two others.
Okay, you can hear from me.
Okay, go ahead then.
I, yeah, you can hear from me. And I know, um, I've refrained a lot because professionally I teach at MSAD thirty-three. So this is kind of a hard thing to be in the middle of it, to be honest with you. Uh, but I've remained professional and I try to do what's best for my students. And I know in education, um, that's what we need to keep in mind. I, um, I'd like to know what the impact will be if we do move forward and go to, you know, have this school in Frenchville. And it sounds like it will kill our community. So obviously I'm not on board for that. But I'd like to know what the cost would be for us if we don't go forward with it. And that's what my concern would be. I don't go on Facebook. I don't go social media. I think I try to stay away from all that stuff. It gives, everyone's opinionated. Everyone, I just try to seek out the facts and then make a decision. But I know everyone, I mean, it's, I don't know if there'd be an issue here if this school selection would have chosen Fort Kent. I think we'd all be on board. And now we're bringing it up that the taxes are gonna increase. That's my, again, this is my, how I view things. I see why the community is so passionate about having it here because I agree, we are the hub, you know, and I agree with all of it. But I've been biting my tongue to almost the point of bleeding to just not refrain from, you know, being on either side, to be honest with you, and look at it on all aspects of it. I don't know if, if people in the site selection felt they were bullied, I mean, they would have to say that they felt so. I don't know if, I mean, now we're, and you're asking me, and I'm trying to be honest with you, is that I, I just saw it all explode when the choice was to go to Frenchville. And I don't know if that would have happened had it been chosen here. I know I can see it probably the explosion happened in Frenchville and Madawaska because everyone wants it to be in their community. My opinion would have been if it did come to Fort Kent, there's no way in hell that Madawaska would want to agree to come here. That's how I felt. Um, Frenchville, for what I represented in the school, I honestly, I mean, the educator kids, I, I think we would have been fine coming to Fort Kent. I mean, I have no issue with it. Um, and I don't wanna speak on behalf of everyone at MSAD thirty-three, but that seems to be the viewpoint that we're fine. I mean, they're happy, obviously, that it's going to Frenchville. I won't deny that. I mean, we'd be, I think we'd be happy if it was chosen to Fort Kent. I think we wouldn't have a serious issue with it. So, excuse me. I know that I've tried to remain professional as a teacher at that district. I, I have not stated any of my opinions there. I do my job. I sometimes will hear things and that, but, and I've refrained from going to social media and saying what I really think. But I know as a town councilman and sitting in this chair, I represent you as the community. And so I do wanna do what's best. My kids go to school. They're both, I got five and seven year olds. They both come to our school. I'm proud of the education they're receiving in our school. It's not easy to be a single parent with all the increased taxes that you speak of and all that. I, I get it. Life is hard. But I try to do my best and I try to, again, represent the people that, so that's my stance on it. And I know maybe you're gonna say, well, that's wishy-washy. You're not taking a stance. But I'm gonna remain professional through all of it, as best as I can.
Just, one of the things you mentioned was the explosion. And I guess we've been on council for a little while, took a year break. And in the start of this process, we sat in on a lot of meetings where they explained an algorithm process that was going to take place. And then as the process started taking place, the algorithm started changing to better suit other areas over Fort Kent. And I think that that's directly a part to the bullying that was being spoken about. And how Madawaska said, there's no way we are gonna go to that school if it's in Fort Kent. And the people that run the engineering farm have a job to do and make money. And if you know that, then you're gonna go to where you're most likely to succeed. And I think that the people in Fort Kent have had a history of being a little more easy to work with, so to speak. And so this is where we're at now. And again, I was for the school being anywhere's until the algorithm started changing. And I started seeing that process place. And now I can support it if it's not gonna be in Fort Kent.
I'm gonna speak up before, oh, four days. I was a part of the site selection committee. And I did concede with the majority to vote for the Frenchville site. But as town manager of Fort Kent, I should have voted for the Fort Kent site because that's where my heart was for the Fort Kent site. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Did you feel pressured in the vote? Well, or like?
I can tell you this, Scott. I have been a police officer for thirty years. I've become fairly good at reading body language. That's been part of my job. I enjoy doing it. I went to a couple of those site selection committees, meetings and was embarrassed. I was embarrassed for the people that were there. For three people in particular that took over that meeting, I watched people cower in their seat and not even wanna make eye contact with anybody else around that when three people in particular spoke. Loud, boisterous, in control, took control. So I call that bullying. And that was from a bystander sitting in the audience. Till I was put on, on the spot myself by one of those, two of those same people. I didn't feel it was really my place to put them back in their place. I figured things were gonna happen because people in Fort Kent take the high road. Unfortunately, those people ran that site selection committee and people cowered in their seat to them. And I felt bad for those people. And that is what happened.
So I'll give you my piece. I can speak to what Tom said. I went to a couple of those site selection meetings. And there was a lot of bullying going on. And I feel like.
and there was a lot of bullying going on, and I feel like the matrix kept getting changed and changed, and it was always benefiting not Fort Kent. And I also have concerns with the economic impact that it will have on Fort Kent. I own multiple rental properties in town, so I'm protecting my investment with... I just, I don't want to see this moving forward, to see a school built in Frenchville and have us lose our school. I believe that the way we voted, they voted to join Valley Unified was done in an incorrect manner, and we were not aware of it. So I would, not, I would like to see SAD withdraw from Valley Unified.
And I'd like to see Plan B. And how much are we willing to spend on our kids?
You know, in comment to that, we have to basically admit that the school administration, who is to oversee the educational process, has been highly focused on moving in this direction solely. So the people that are there have basically taken this and moved forward with it, and, you know, not really spent a lot of time looking at Plan B alternative, because they're looking at this unified process.
You know, if we have to go to Plan B, Fort Kent has built a skeet though. Fort Kent has built a golf course, we've built an outdoor center. I mean, we've supported our children, and there's no reason why we can't build a school. There's got to be a way.
And we can work with the college if we had to.
There's got to be a way.
Plus, there are grants out there.
If we stick together, we can do this.
There are grants to repair schools too.
There are.
Although we were told there was none, and I'm sure there is grants out there that could apply for at least.
Well, I think to John's point, it was, we're going to deal with it once and then first.
You have to realize, like John said, the administration got six hundred thousand dollars to get this rolling until it's built, a lot of money.
I find if this moves forward, our Madawaskas' taxes will go down, Frenchville's taxes may go down, ours will go up for sure, because sixty, seventy percent of the students responsible up here is going to go down over there.
You know, they want to save some money. I hate to say that, but close Frenchville and San Agatha, those are the old, the oldest schools, they can go either to Madawaska or Fort Kent, let them decide. That's my opinion, we get more money for the kids that come to Fort Kent.
San Agatha and Frenchville are financially sound, they've got monies put away.
Because they know how to buy it.
But they don't have the children, that's right. As far as for money, they're all set.
For their school department. There's no social, there's no social.
So if the council, right now, the majority of the council seems to be, obviously, not supporting the school going to Frenchville. So if, for instance, there's a straw poll and it says, okay, we still want it in Frenchville, whatever, is there any way that the council could at least notify the citizens of the town to say, listen, this is what's happening, we feel that this is not in the best interest of Fort Kent, at least notify the citizens so they can make an informed decision and at least know that the council doesn't think it's in, you know, is there something the council could do to notify the citizens? If it's going in a direction that the council doesn't feel is in the best interest of the town.
When the time is appropriate. You would have to, you would have to the election.
You have to realize that this straw poll will be held at the gymnasium, the same as the school budget meetings, and there'll only be the same amount of people there, a couple hundred. People are not going to go vote there and be ridiculed, like they have been for years. I don't go anymore. I have to go and sit next to Don, him on Don, and say, please don't sit next to me because you're going to ask a question and then later I know you. So, you can't go there and buck the system.
Yeah, that's the thing, and participation at those meetings are extremely low, you know that. Citizens don't go there because they're afraid, they're literally afraid to go. I've been to a budget meeting where people were standing up yelling at the opposition, and it was unbelievable. So I think historically, nobody goes to those meetings. So I guess that is really why I'm asking the council to possibly take some kind of a position and maybe educate the citizens as to how they feel. Because they're not going to the budget meeting.
Well, I think, I think as we move forward in this process, there will be opportunity for input for us as individuals. Again, I think, you know, our position really is not, as a council, we really don't have say for this. Because the school board are the ones that are given that duty. But I think you've heard our individual opinions. I think as we move forward in this process, the school group is a large voting block. And you can bet that they're going to organize to get their vote out. And we will have to do, the rest of the community will have to do the same.
Organize.
Well, that's what I mean, I guess, again, I would like to hear from the council, is that something you could do for the citizens? In other words, when the time comes, if the voting population is so low at the school board meetings, is there a way the council could notify the citizens and kind of let them know, this is what's happening, we do not feel like this is in the best interest of our town, it's important that you go vote, I mean, not necessarily say vote one way or the other, but at least say that, you know, come, it's important that this vote, if you don't support this or do support it, go vote regardless, you know.
The process that's there at the school board meeting is much different too, because you come here to the town, you know, you get all day to vote. You go over there, you've got that ten-minute window, you know, and it's just, it's a different type of process that's there. So if you had absentee ballots and you had all-day voting and you had whatever that was there, I'll tell you what, your attendance and your voting record would be much, much different than what it is currently.
Not opposed, not opposed to, I'll be speaking for myself, but when the time comes and it gets closer to the public being informed, especially prior to making a decision, we can take some sort of, before, taking some sort of ad or with some bullet points to help educate, yeah, that's an important part of this.
And we can certainly make sure that the community is informed about the voting time or the voting, when things need to get voted on. The straw poll that's going to happen, I mean, it's just so that they can show the commissioner that it's worth moving forward. If the straw poll fails...
They're still unsure, if two communities and one doesn't support it, they're still unsure, it might still move ahead now.
I think it could move ahead if Madawaska and Fort Kent, Madawaska and SAD Twenty-Seven voted in positive, and SAD Thirty-Three voted against it, it probably would still move forward just because of the numbers of students. I think if either Madawaska or Fort Kent does not support it, it's probably going to be dead in the water. Right.
Couldn't we draft a letter to the commissioner?
I think we need to wait.
Is that out of place, or is that a potential?
I hope it's out of place.
I think that might weigh more than anything.
So, I want to thank you all for your participation tonight. I think we've all learned something about this whole business going on. And I appreciate your input for us as a group here at the council. And, I mean, regardless of the position that individuals may have, people are trying to do it for the best of the community, and we must not lose sight of that, even if we don't agree with the position. People are trying to do what's best for the community. And collectively, with our different opinions, hopefully we will get to a point where we have the best solution.
Are they still on?
Yes.
Close to sign? Yeah. Close to signing?
I want your autograph, Jim.
Jeff, we still have a meeting going on?
Want me to put your name?
I'm giving my information. Can I ask? Access officer, assistant.
So as part of the, the access act, we're required to appoint someone as the point of contact, and it's recommended that we have some assistants, one or two assistants, because sometimes I may be out of the office, but the assistant might be female. As long as we acknowledge that we received the information within five days, we do have extra time to get back to them with the actual information. So I just need recommendations to appoint me as the officer. And I chose Angela since she gets a lot of municipal her information, and Cindy, since Cindy does a lot of our town website and Facebook page.
So I want to take a motion for Suzie to be the charge.
Who's the access officer?
Public access officer, information assistance, Angela, and Cindy. I'll make that a motion. Carol, if further discussion, I'll in favor, motion carries. Waiver for closure.
So we have an individual who owes two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen taxes. His trailer is due to foreclosure next week. He has obviously fallen behind, and he stopped in to see me, asking if I would set up a payment plan. He was, he paid a hundred dollars that day. I did say that I'm willing to take a payment plan. As you're all aware, last year we took in two mobile homes, and we had to abate them because they were beyond repair. I don't think this one is beyond repair, but in classes that we've been to, we should be signing off on mobile homes for waivers of foreclosure. So if the council agrees, I can sign off on the waiver of foreclosure. We have set up a plan, and it looks like he'll be done paying two thousand seventeen taxes by April of twenty twenty. He'll still owe the eighteen and nineteenth, and he did not have a homestead exemption. If he had applied for a homestead exemption, he would not be in this situation. Taxes would have really been two hundred and forty dollars a year. But he will have the homestead exemption through twenty twenty.
Okay. We haven't done this in the past, so I have a question. Do we qualify as the municipality's legislative body?
Yes.
Because I thought that that was, the legislative body was basically the town, like, town motion. I mean, I'm just thinking that, that basically the town meeting is the legislative body. Now, it's possible that we have authorization to do this through some of the articles that have been passed, but...
We don't, we don't have an actual article.
But just before, before we act on it, can we clarify that?
And if not, then we'll have to put it as an article in annual report.
Yes, we'll have, you'll have to vote on it in March. Yeah.
So I can bring it back for the twenty-third?
Yeah. So does this mean in the meantime that you can't take or...
No, he's not.
No, we, I mean, basically, as far as the foreclosure process, it's up to us to do it. Paperwork, and then you basically just not do it, even though we have the authorities. It's our, it's our choice, I mean, it's our choice to foreclose on the property. There, I know there's been other instances where we had properties that we didn't want to foreclose on because the value was going to be a liability to us to foreclose on the property. So we just left it, I mean, you know, let the people do it.
And he did come in, and he is wanting to make this right. He was working for a company in town, and that company closed, but he's now working in Madawaska.
Yeah.
So, good, good for him. Good for him.
Okay, so, so I just want to make sure that we don't make an action that we can't do. And I didn't look at that until five o'clock, so I must have to say something.
That's good. We'll bring it back for the twenty-third.
Main Pers.
Main Pers, okay, so we've received our surplus funds from Main Pers from when we had pulled out of Main Pers back in nineteen ninety-six, I believe. We received a check of four hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-eight cents. What I need is an approval. Per Keelhood, our auditor, he said he would like to see an approval by council to set those funds aside specifically to offset Main Pers and Boya differences. So we need a vote to offset that in an account to be used as employer match for the Main Pers. There is a difference in price between our Boya deferred compensation and Main Pers, so this will help offset, and we'll be using all of it to offset because we need to slowly build so that we meet somewhere. And I've done the calculations, and we have funds for at least twelve years to keep us going. We offset on both sides.
I, at some point, I'd like to see kind of how those numbers are. I mean, I'd like to see how much we're subsidizing that through that process. But, in your last statement in your note here, it include a percentage increase for the town portion of the end-to-end budget amount?
So basically, on a yearly basis, the town, the town will have, will also have an increase to offset the Main Pers, so there will be an increase to the budgets.
Right.
So that we end up, it's not a big chunk.
So as one goes away, the other one takes over.
Right.
Yeah, so... So I'd like to see, I'd like to see numbers of that. I'd like to see kind of how it, how it sort of like, if the pencil's out in that time period, just so that we kind of understand it. I'm not, I'm not against the concept, we had talked about that back when we made discussions about going for the mainstay retirement, but, I mean, I still want to have some idea of what it's going to cost us forward on.
So I do have, but do you want to just vote on it for the twenty-third, or? Do you, do you want to vote on the offset, and then we can...
I'm not, well, personally, I'm not against voting on it tonight, okay? Because it's something that we had discussed before. But I also just want to see the hard numbers, just so that, so that I understand and the impact of the budget. That, that's, but, I entertain a motion to move forward with this funding here.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Carol, second by Corey. Discussion, all in favor? Discussion, all in favor, motion carries.
Okay, second session.
Want to do the other things first or there's not any others to speak out?